A second here. Well, it's gonna take about a minute, I'm sorry. He's downstairs. It's because of the way the Zoom call does it for his phone. Yeah, that's the the live stream, which will be up in a minute.
Hello.
Hey there, Bob.
Greetings.
Hello, John.
All right, guys, we are live on YouTube, so we're ready to start the meeting.
Live, all right. Welcome, everybody, this is a first for us as a council to have a meeting. Practicing our social distancing, I appreciate. With that, this is our April thirteenth twenty twenty meeting at seven P M. Can I have roll call, please?
Michael Hillman.
Here.
Scott Fennell. Chuck Carmen.
Here.
Bob Bowlen.
Here.
John Curtis.
Here.
Arcte Cabeli.
Here.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite. Thank you, Stephen. Okay.
I would move to approve the agenda for the April thirteenth twenty twenty meeting.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, Chuck and.
That was very cool.
And discussion.
I've got a question here, this Bob, does someone have, like, you know, I just wonder if you had your cellphone open, I'm getting a lot of feedback here.
I do not have my cellphone open.
Ah, okay.
Hello.
After this, we'll be discussing that.
There we go.
Oh, yeah, it was me, I apologize.
Is that better, Bob?
Oh, much, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we get some feedback from John's phone.
That's my fault, sorry, guys.
No problem. What happened?
Do we have any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Hearing none, we will move, does anybody feel that they have a conflict of interest tonight?
I I do mayor on the bills.
Okay, yeah, what we're gonna do is Carmen sent out a email to everybody, we're gonna do these in two different ones. First, we'll approve the bills. Well, I got the bills. Yeah, when we do the bills, I'll do it in two separate one, one is a group with everything without ally or without allied, and then another one with everybody with ally. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Hey, that way we'll get them all approved. Okay, no conflicts, that's the only conflict of interest, okay, we have minutes in front of us. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? And then I need a motion.
I'd like to move that we approve the minute from the March twenty third twenty twenty meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Second, got Chuck and Bob. Discussion, did anybody find anything that we needed to talk about or correct?
Good.
Aye. All in favor, second.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move to the bills, do I have a motion?
No, that we approve the bills to April thirteenth twenty twenty, except for allied towing.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Motion is second, Chuck and John. Any questions on the bills, I know that Art had called in for some questions, did you get all your answers, Art?
I do, I wanna thank Dan, she gave me all the answers I requested, and I appreciate that, it worked very well, thank you.
Okay, great, it's good to hear, anybody? Okay, roll call.
Michael Hillman.
Yes.
Scott Fennell, Chuck Carmen.
Yes.
Bob Bowlen.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Arcte Cabeli.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Aren't I supposed to recuse on this one, Diane, I'm sorry?
No, no, okay, now I need a second motion without allied towing.
Oh, I'm sorry, then yes on the last one, I apologize.
Yes, right.
Okay.
Motion without allied towing.
I'd like to move to approve the allied towing bills to April thirteenth twenty twenty.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion.
Second.
Motion is second, all right, roll call.
Michael Hillman.
Yes.
Chuck Carmen.
Yes.
Bob Bowlen.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Arcte Cabeli.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody, we do have one public comment tonight, John, can we get him on the phone?
Andy's up right now. No.
Yes, but I thought I did add call, sorry.
Oh, they're not in there.
Thank you.
His name's John Buckley.
All right, just give us just a second, everyone, we're trying to get Mr. Buckley on the phone. Oh, thank you, we are ready to put you into public comment, are you ready? Okay, hang on a line.
Sorry, hit merge.
Okay, you're on there.
You can listen on the.
What's his name, John? Mr. Buckley, are you there?
I am.
Council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Buckley.
So I am representing Saint Paul's Catholic Church in Idaho Springs, and we basically have a church building with one water closet and one sink. The other portion of the building is a rectory, so that's where our parish priests live. And the church has just one restroom, which has minimal usage on a monthly basis, like I say, just one water closet and one sink. And Saint Paul's is being charged the commercial per gallon charge for the entire building. And we were hoping to to shift that to a per gallon charge on a residential, as a residential property, as opposed to a commercial property. As as you can probably guess, we're dependent on the donations of our parishioners and visitors, so we're a nonprofit entity, not a lot of money, and and really that that water closet and sink, you know, just just has very little use, there's there's obviously Sunday mass once a week. And there are daily masses, if if one or two people attend daily mass, we're lucky, and oftentimes, they don't even use that restroom, so. So that's sort of our position, and we we just wanted to voice our concern.
Okay, Mr. Buckley, this is Mike Hillman, Mayor Mayor Mike Hillman. I don't know if you were told, this is, this is, what you're doing is under public comment, so there will be discussion how how we would move forward and discuss the water situation, the building situation. So as long as you know, what we'll do is the council will take this, and we will set up a work session to discuss this item. This is.
Okay.
A public comment would never be a decision making item, so we'll take this.
Okay.
Appreciate you coming in, and we're looking at trying to do the same type of Zoom or 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 remote, remote meetings, so as soon as we know the date that we're gonna discuss that, Mr. Buckley, we will let you know, so you can tune in with us.
Perfect, I appreciate your consideration.
All right, thank you, Mr. Buckley, have a good evening.
Okay. Have a good day.
All right. We don't have any unscheduled public comment, nobody called in with any. And we can move down to resolutions, do I have a motion?
I would move that we adopt resolution number nine, series twenty twenty, a resolution authorizing the use of electronic consent for signatures on ordinances, resolutions, contracts, and other instruments barring the city's signature.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion.
I I know that we run through this through Carmen, I was just wondering if our auditor had any comments or any concerns at all on this.
Say it again, Diane.
This resolution was proposed by Carmen.
This was proposed by Carmen, so I'm assuming that she did her homework to make sure that we were covered before we had this ordinance on our, on this resolution in our packet.
Yeah, I I'm not sure we even need to check with our auditor to tell you the truth, but because he got really, you know, he was in a pentagon contract, and I just, I was wondering, you know, if we had talked to him or not, I'm not really concerned particularly.
I don't think that we interviewed the auditor, and I'm not sure that Carmen may have thought about that. My suggestion and direction would be, let's go ahead and approve this tonight, we need to amend it, we can do that at another meeting.
I agree, yes.
I agree.
If it's the audit, the only thing we're worried about. Sign that once a year anyway.
It'll show up in the next audit, now that I think about it, if he has. Good point.
Any other questions, council?
No, sir.
Chuck made the motion, who seconded the motion?
Oh, Bob did.
Yeah, that was me, it was.
Bob, Bob seconded, okay, all right, can I have a roll call, please?
Michael Hillman.
Yes.
Chuck Carmen.
Yes.
Bob Bowlen.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Arcte Cabeli.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
All right, motion passes, all right, we will move down to the administration report, Andy?
Mayor and council, you have my report with no request for action.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Andy?
I I have a brief question on the first one, when you met with the Community Matters Incorporated, I assume they didn't charge us for their time for that meeting?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Right, any other questions for Andy? All right, we'll move to City Clark.
Mayor and council, I did not include the staff report, but just the sales tax report.
Sales tax report, and Diane finished up, thank you Diane for finishing up the election, I hope it went as smooth as it seemed like it did from the outside. Don't cringe like that. Anybody have any questions for Diane, please?
Yeah, I do, Diane, what's our, what's the sales tax? Are we up twelve percent, or is that down, I'm sorry?
That's an increase of twelve percent.
And you gotta remember, Jim, April, April line is really reflecting February's sales tax.
Right. We're two months in the rear, is correct.
Leg, right?
Correct.
Okay. And and as far as the election, what was the overall cost of that, I didn't see that.
It hasn't been tabulated yet.
Okay.
All right, any other?
Well, okay, okay.
Anything else? All right, thanks Diane, we will move to PD's chief.
Mayor and council, I'll refer you to my report, and we have no request for action.
All right, any questions for chief?
I'd like to commend the chief and his crew for doing a really good job through all this, I see these guys keeping, keeping good track of of the social distancing, the keeping the the safe distance law, even even Sonnenberg, when he was in the shop today, you could tell that's kind of been into these guys and stuff, so good job on account of that, as far as us, the abandonments have been going smooth and great, I'd like to commend you, chief, as well as Steve for not letting things go, selling cars in thirty five days and less, which is I don't, this probably doesn't mean much to the council and and the mayor, but this is a really big deal for the towing industry as a whole. This this doesn't happen, like the chiefs put these steps into place for us personally, and following the CRS to the letter, that I I'm able to tow abandoned vehicles for our town, you know, at at no money, all out of cost for myself, and also the staff of the PD, but these guys are getting rid of cars and stuff in thirty five days and less. So this this is unheard of, so and I I've also, sorry to drag this on, I brought this up to our towing association. They have also advised me to commend you, chief, on the speed of which you're doing this, so congrats to that.
Thank you, I'll I'll pass that on to the guys.
Yep.
I don't know, I don't know if council's aware, but one of the, one of the things that has has been a problem in this town, for one reason or another, people find it an easy place to dump vehicles, I do wanna, I do wanna pass one thing on that the council's unaware of, is that we've had a number of abandoned campers in the city, and although the city pays the cost of the tow, Jim loses money on those because there's no scrap involved, so he essentially eats the cost of disposing of these campers that we find around around town, so I just wanted to pass that on, and and thank you for the compliment, the guys are working hard, but they're they're getting a little tired, some long shifts that, as you can see in my report, calls for service have declined, but the seriousness of the calls has not really been remedied, and that goes to the fact that a lot of the folks involved in these violations actually live in town, but the the police department's doing a great job, I'm really proud of everybody.
Chris, I have a question, this is Bob, in terms of personal protective equipment, I was just wondering if you've been having any trouble with getting enough for your officer.
Bob, you're cutting in and out, you were asking me about the personal protection equipment?
Yes, you've had any difficulties getting enough of it.
Yeah, we got ahead of this, we had a, we did have a supply of the N ninety three masks, and when the, when this first started to come to light, we put it in order. So I would say that we've been very conservative with our use of the N ninety five masks, we do have a supply of the disposable paper masks that the officers are using, and they're also using the improvised masks in areas where there isn't a lot of public contact, so for the time being, we're we're good, we're finding that the the, there was some price gouging for a little while, but we found that the prices are coming down, we just got in another small order of gloves, the natural gloves, for for eight fifty a box, and that's about what they were costing us before the emergencies. So I think all in all, we're good, everybody has access to Tyvek suits, or you know, really known contaminated environments, so I think for the time being, we're doing really good.
Okay, good, good.
I'm sorry, Bob, I'd also like to pass a point out that a couple, I don't know his name, but Betty Edwards, she and her husband donated a a box of the N ninety five masks, and Karen Shane with Walmart just delivered approximately a hundred and fifty of the disposable paper masks, so we're grateful to the community as well.
Great, good, thank you.
Any more questions from chief? All right, we'll move down to water and wastewater, anybody in public works, John, you can cover all of it, does anybody have any questions for John?
Water and wastewater use up or down? You know?
We haven't taken a reading yet. What are they producing down there, why don't we, why don't we pull that up, John, next couple of days, let's see what our production compared to last year was, year to year?
Just curse with no travel, and everybody's sticking at home.
No, John Bordoni, can you hear me, John?
Yeah, we're having it.
In trouble here, John?
Yeah, I'm not. Oh, we got you there.
There you go, John, hey, John, there was a, there was a question about our production of our water, is there any way that you can get Justin to give us production for comparable week to week from last year and this week?
For.
Of production?
Current month, we were down about a million gallons, wastewater flow was down to the lowest point, about a hundred and eighty five thousand gallons on influence, so yes, it has dropped on both.
So we're down a million gallons, you said?
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions for John? All right, so what I'm gonna do is, council, if you want to wear already, myself, and we have John Bordoni, we have Katie Daly, we have John Jonathan Kane and Andy and Chief, we meet every morning at nine o'clock, so we could discuss any changes that are going on with this COVID nineteen virus, if there's any change in the orders, what we're doing locally, we also have periodic phone conferences with the county, and we kind of tag on to them to listen to what they're doing. So positive news, as of today, our community has immediately stepped up to support one another, whether it's the dozen volunteers who are supporting feeding efforts, or neighbors reaching out to individual individually to help their neighbors get groceries, the community did not skip a beat in being there for one another. That that's pretty much happened, you know, right after this thing started, another thing, the city has, we developed our own outreach, and we also was partnered with the Helping Hands, which is the churches in the community, and that's how we were able to distribute some some food items for people that were in need, they were, did a pretty good job on that, reached out, right, right for them. So some relevant dates and facts, April twenty sixth, the current stay at home order happened in Colorado, Clear Creek County roads are restricted for nonresidents, that happened on Saturday morning at twelve A M, twelve oh one A M. Hearing some of the chatter about that, we do feel that less people came up this weekend, knowing that they would get turned away, and potentially get cited for coming up here, so we did see a decline in some of the folks that were coming up here and using our backyard directly. What we're, what we are doing also in these meetings, we talk daily about how we can provide some financial help to our citizens, what grants are available that we need to apply for that can help out, and just some ideas, as of today, look through the budget to see for which departments, and what kind of capital improvements that we can delay, and that we can push back, because folks, we are gonna be, we already are in a jam with our employees, as I mentioned before, the last thing that we want to look at is furloughing employees and having them take days off without pay. What we have done is we have been able to create something for the people, for for staff, and it's been staff here at City Hall, Wonder, and Kelsey, and and staff members over at the PD, we are giving them special assignments instead of laying them off or giving them a day off, they have been, we have been being able to give them some special assignments to help out with the volunteer groups, so that keeps them on payroll, it helps out, and it shows that the, that our city, our city staff is a hundred percent part of and supportive of all the things that we're doing to to help reach out to our community. Now, the the grants that we apply for is not a lot of money, it's twenty five thousand dollars. I put a Facebook post out last week that said that we, council, would be, and we've already, as staff, been talking about what kind of relief we can get for our water bills, and to remind you, relief does not always mean financial relief, and we are making some avenues, and the first one was to extend the bill that was due at the end of March, that we extended that with no service charge or late fees attached to that, and we've got that going through the end of April. Oh. End of May, that was end of April.
But we extended it to the next.
Okay, so we're going all the way till the end of April, so people will have time to pay their bills, they'll still have to pay them, but with no fees, we also have a payment plan already with the city that somebody can come in and set up on a payment plan if they need it, so anytime we can get that message out there as well, John's been putting it out there on Facebook, on our website, and things, I think we've only had one person that's actually requested a payment. Again, coordinating with the county on emergency response, what this is, is on Tuesdays, we'll end, and we said for about an hour, we get reports from the C P H E, the county health organization, and just kind of give an update of what they're seeing across the county. I will say that I'm very proud of what we've done here in Idaho Springs, because we kind of, from day one, we took the bull by the horns, and we made sure that our our citizens were gonna be providing for and service like we wanted them to, not that we're not working with the county, but we're kind of doing our own thing, and just staying in touch with the county and what they're doing. Again, the the loans and grant programs, we're starting to see finally with residents and and workers in the community, starting to get their unemployment checks, which is huge, we still don't have an ideal when and if this other plan that would provide six hundred dollars a week for employees coming down from the feds, we haven't heard much more on that, I've got John Kane keeping up with that, and making sure that we have all the information on that on this phone, every morning at nine o'clock, we're having our meetings. Let's see, any, do I have any comments from council, things that you suggest that we might need to be doing, or any questions for me, or any staff here at City Hall?
This is Arthur, first of all, I wanted to thank Andy for the the emails he's putting out in reference to the virus and the different things that you guys discuss at the meetings and statistics and what have you, I really appreciate that, as far as the community is concerned, I'd like to mention there's this company called Doyle Disposal, which we're all aware of, they, for the next three months, have reduced their residential charges about twenty five percent, so the average, I think, is forty dollars, they've moved it to thirty to help the residents of, you know, with, still getting rid of their garbage, but at a lesser price, so ten dollars off is twenty five percent, I think it's through May or June, I'm not sure, maybe June, I think it was three months, I just wanted to bring them up, because I'm sure there's other outfits that are doing the same, like you said, as far as people helping people, and they're a small company, so I I just think, you know, you see things like that, and it's it's encouraging, and I just wanted to mention that, mention them, I own no stock in the company, so it's purely something that they did that I thought was very kind.
That's good to know, Art.
Yeah, thank you, Art, for that.
You're welcome.
We do know that we still have Bojos doing pizzas, we still have. We still have smoking yards. We still have Tommyknockers. And I believe that Azteca is open Thursday through Sunday. Marion's is open in the morning, eight to one. But I think most of the rest of the full-service restaurants, Main Street is closed down, myself is closed down.
Yeah, I heard this afternoon.
Still, Mount Prime's still trying to go at it.
Yeah.
So anytime we can encourage our local folks, if you talk to them on the phone, pick up a to-go order. I'm sure there's going to be another decrease in business because now that the do-not-come items are to Clear Creek County, I believe that is going to even decrease more the traffic out on the highway and probably going to decrease the sales of what they're trying to accomplish with those establishments. So moving forward, we're just going to kind of keep up. We're on till April 26th is what the governor has put out for statewide. There are other communities in other counties that are extending a little bit longer. They're doing that on their own mainly because our own rule and they can determine and dictate their future and what they want to do. So we're still got that. We don't even know if that's going to be extended. We talk daily about how businesses will eventually roll out again and get going again. We've talked about what we're going to do with our kickoff parade in June. With way it looks now, I don't think that would be a good idea for us to even hold this. We've got flowers ordered, what is it, $12,000 for the flowers?
Like seven.
$7,000 for the flowers. We've already contacted them. I don't feel comfortable. It's going to be hard to get all these flowers out with this going on. But I also don't feel comfortable with ordering these flowers from somebody and then calling them and telling them we're not going to take them. So we're trying to work with them. I don't know if they'll give us any discount, but we're working very diligently with the flower company. And we're looking for volunteers. Volunteers are going to be, because most of our volunteers that put the flowers in were at the risk age. So we're going to need some younger talent out there to help us get these things planted. They're trying to get that first week. First week of June still, John?
It's looking that way unless there's snow.
Also, what we're talking about is our fireworks. We have already paid a deposit of, I believe, $10,000. I still am not sure or none of us are sure how we're going to be rolled out, if it makes sense for us to do that fireworks show in July or if we should maybe look at just postponing it until our tree lighting ceremony and do it November. John's got a question?
Andy and I were looking at the contract for the fireworks, and we may have something to bring in the very near future about that, like possibilities for what we might be doing.
We're working on that. We find that as something that's very costly for us. We felt that was great for us to do, center of community promotions. And, you know, we're just looking at everything that we can start cutting before we start having to lay people off and furloughing our employees. What was another, was another pretty big item that you were talking about?
The improvement fund?
Yeah, we've got the fireworks.
Oh, Christmas lights.
Oh, thank you, John. Christmas lighting. We know how much we love those and how great it looked, but we're going to really have to look at the cost of that. It doesn't make sense with what's going on and how long it's going to take us to pull out of this economic decline. Doesn't make sense for us to spend that kind of money on lighting up the channel. Of course, you know, it's a feel-good thing. It might be something for the, an emotional thing for our community, but we really got to start looking at dollars and cents moving forward at the day and even before the day. So what we'll do is we'll come up with some ideas, and then we'll have a work session to bring to council of what we may be looking at cutting over the next several months to try to cut our budget some. And Chief already gave some suggestions of what he can do. John Bordoni was with us today and already gave us suggestions of what he could do. And it's not going to cover the whole gap. I think we can do a pretty good job of coming up with something that will help us survive over the next several months.
I'd like to add some. John Curtis.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah. I'd like to get no compensation for being on city council till all this is done. It's not much. It's not much, but it'll help a little bit.
Anybody else have any comments?
I'd agree with that. This is Jim. I would do the exact same thing.
Okay. If everybody wants to pull out a budget and, you know, it's online, you can print it out yourself and start taking a look at it and start marking up things that you might think that we could, you know, there's some things that we just can absolutely not cut. You know, it's part of our budget. We can't do it. But if you see something that you'd like to question, if we can make a cut or go away with it, we're postponing for a year out or two years out on our capital improvements, that'd be a great start. Okay, Andy, you got anything?
No, thank you.
All right, any other council have anything else?
Oh, Mayor?
Yes.
This is Andy. Did you just want to mention the community forum next Monday at 5:30?
Okay. Did everybody hear that? What we're going to do is we're going to do a community forum. Of course, it's not going to be, it's not going to be here live, but just so our community can start asking questions. I'm sure there's a lot of confusion and a lot of questions being asked, and I'm hoping that we can have some answers. And I'm very sure that most of the questions will be about coronavirus, what we're doing, how long we think it's going to be before we can get back up and running and start putting this behind us. So we're going to prepare very good for Monday night. That's going to be at 5:30. And don't we have a work session after that? Andy?
No, the work session will be the following week before the city council meeting. The work session will be at 5:30 and then the regular meeting at 7:00.
Okay, okay. So we only have the public forum next Monday?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, counsel?
I'm glad to hear you. Yeah, you guys are really on top of the implication for our budget here. I appreciate that a lot.
Oh, yeah, that was the first thing that we started grabbing for because we're figuring about, we're figuring about an 85% budget. If you look at yours made from last year, I think that if you look at 2019, 230, 2,000, I bet we're going to be around 80,000.
Yeah.
Just for March. So I think it's going to be that big of a number that we're getting hit. Really, the places that are collecting sales tax right now is some of the grocery items, your fast food, your restaurants that are still in service, and a little bit on gas. No other sales tax coming in, so.
No, I agree. I think it's going to be pretty devastating. And on top of all the money we'll have to spend on red ink, so it's not good.
Okay, anything else? All right, hearing nothing. It is 7:35. Meeting adjourned.